Please join me in the end of the.
[inaudible] [inaudible] United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do roll call Lucy, could you please establish a quorum?
Stephanie Tibbetts.
Here.
Frankie Schwartz.
Here.
DMs wires.
Here.
Jeff Snyder.
Here.
Carolyn Sprague.
And Keith Harson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you Lucy. Alright, first item of business is to amend or adopt the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All second.
Alright, excuse me, motion in a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Alright, amend it. Do- agenda is adopted. There's always a time to start from here. We don't have any recognitions tonight, so we can move on to potential patron comments. Lucy, do we have any public comments tonight? Alright, we'll jump right into superintendent reports and I think our first one is update on the Daniel Boone, new Daniel Boone building.
That's right, so we have Matt McDermott here from Hutter Architects to give us an update. Oh, we need clicker.
Hang on. On the side of your stuff.
I got one here.
Let me get the... Sorry. Thank you.
That mic's hot too. Careful.
No, we need to figure out our microphone.
We'll get you going here.
It's not in the slideshow yet.
Well, good evening everyone and thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on your new elementary school. It's exciting.
Yeah.
It is.
I'm excited. Come on.
Matt, you look good.
I don't know why I can't get it to work. I really don't. Okay. Oh, there it goes. Yay. Sorry about that.
No, you're good. No, all I need to do is get this door.
Okay, well, now we're good.
No. No, it's out, the slideshow.
Oh.
It's not going to be blocked, right?
I know.
There you go.
Now maybe.
There. Now it's working.
We have a winner.
Yay.
Alright. Thanks Lucy.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so just, I'm gonna start each time, just as a refresher to understand the site. So Ash Road's across the top, Highway forty-seven is on the left, your main parking lot is to the left, the tan area is the building footprint, and you can see the gray area, which is the whole loop around the building with the bus lot. Is there a pointer on here? I don't think so. Okay, alright, that's fine.
Now they kicked it out again. What, oh, what? Are you doing something Matt? Are you clicking?
I'm pressing the little arrows. Here we go. Okay, so the first photo is the aerials down to the left, and then the upper right, I thought would help give you a little orientation to circle the area of where the main detention pond is. So they have that all graded out. It's finished, once, in the next probably month or so, they'll start seeding and getting things cleaned up. It's been just a little too dry to start putting grass seed down. So that's a view looking towards Ash Road at that detention area. Okay, swinging around to forty-seven, the area there circled, that front parking lot, so all the concrete for the driveline, parking spots, curbs, and it's been backfilled around the curbs, it's all completed. They've even put in the striping for the parking spots. So here in the next couple of weeks, they're gonna cut a curb in off of the city's Rock Road and start using that. All the contractors will be parking on the concrete to get them out of the dirt and the mud, and that's going to alleviate some of the traffic and dirt on Ash Road. Okay, so you can just get an idea of that. But getting that finished before Mother Nature hits with the fall and winter weather is a huge step. Okay, and swinging all the way around, looking north towards your future, we'll call them playfields, playground area, and future parking that will happen down there. They've got that flattened out now because they've got a better grasp on grades, and you can play soccer there, any kind of ball, that kind of thing, but that's in good shape too, so they will start seeding that and getting that cleaned up for it. Going up in the air, so upper left is your storm shelter, you can see the light gauge trusses, which is like a Manfred frame. What that does is that allows us to screen the rooftop units and mechanical equipment on top of that. So when you're down a grade, and some of you may not have even noticed, it looks like a complete Noah roof, but it's really, I'll call it a fake Manfred roof around the perimeter of that, make it look like a Noah roof, but behind that hides all the utilities and rooftop units of that Manfred roof. And then coming down, you can see they have metal deck over the band and stage area, main entrance area there in the center, and then to the right, that upper section of metal deck is your multipurpose room slash cafeteria, and then to the right of that is your food service cafeteria area. So they are moving quite well with steel direction and metal deck. Swinging around now, to the left, looking at your classroom wings, the upper right one where you can see some of the walls and that, the masons there, putting in corridor walls, the firewall that separates at the building expansion joint, that's all going on on the right classroom wing. And then to the left, they are a little farther along, and we're gonna show you some interior pictures down there, but they have the light gauge trusses placed, metal deck on, and they are proceeding with interior metal studs, ductwork, and electrical roughens, which is good. They've got a good jump. So here, we're jumping into your south classroom wing, looking down the corridor, so you can see the corridor walls on each side with some of the door openings. Block wall up to ten foot eight, and then from there up is light gauge trusses, and the center section there, probably here the next time, will start having ductwork, main trunk line ductwork running through that main corridor, starting to split off into each classroom. They are in good shape. They hope to start next week, putting the rigid insulation, coverboard, and the EPDM roof on this south classroom wing. Once that happens, they'll be weather tight in there, and they can start doing more work and get some more trades in there, doing their thing. So here's a typical classroom on the south wing. You can see the ductwork there, some electrical conduits, and some temporary electric giving light in there since now that they have that deck on top, it's obviously shadowing all the sun, just the sunlight. But they're moving along really good in the south wing, and then you can see the framed outside window of a classroom, typical classroom, light gauge trusses above, electrical conduit and some ductwork on. So they're moving very well on that classroom wing. So swinging around, this is the main section of toilet restrooms that are just outside the cafeteria, multipurpose room. They have subgrade plumbing going in, you can see all the PVC piping coming up. Once they're done with their work, the electrician will come in behind him, do his subgrade work, and they get that finished, push back the rock, and then they'll be ready to pour the slabs for that area. This is the ramp, so these walls that you see are the switchback ramp, if you remember touring the other building, that takes you up to the music room, which is at the same level of the stage. So you go up that ramp, get on your music room, and then you can go from the music room floor elevation straight to the backstage. And then jumping inside to the storm shelter, just a big concrete bunker, but just letting you know, I don't know if I've shown you this or if you've seen this, but the double Ts, precast walls, everything are up, and they're moving along, starting with the interior footings and grade work on the inside. So this is looking at the corner of one of the stage wing walls, so to the left is the built-up, where there'll be the restrooms on the left, you've got that wing wall there coming back on the right, and then steps will be going all the way across there where you kind of see the ramp of rock sloping up, that'll be the steps of your main stage up to your stage floor. And then swinging outside on the north side, you can see the small opening in the back there, small little building sticking up, that is your generator enclosure for storm. It's part of the precast structure, so that when they, in the event of a storm and power goes out, that generator kicks in, you get a two-hour timeframe for the storm event to run your power, some of your lights, and some of your emergency lighting. This is just next to the main storm shelter, you can see the music room in the background, the elevated slab, that wood-framed area there with the yellow vapor barrier at the bottom is placed for a rooftop unit to sit, that's your main mechanical room that will feed into the storm shelter with heating and cooling. And then this is swinging back around, looking at your north classroom wing, they are putting vapor barrier and mesh down, that is the art room there on the corner, and their goal is to have all of their floor slabs poured by the first week in November, get all the floor slabs done, and then they'll jump outside and will continue doing the rest of the loop of the concrete pavement off that front section that I showed you earlier. So they are moving very well, weather is really good right now for them, so they wanna get their slabs down, so when Mother Nature switches, they've got concrete to work on and not mud and rock. So it's going good. And just the schedule, just kind of a reminder, they are ahead of schedule, but it's the same schedule I showed you before, and I'll keep that up there. Right now, the substantial completion contractually was in November and final in December, they are ahead of schedule, and they are in July, August timeframe for finishing up this building the way they're managing it and rocking and rolling with the project, so I wanted to share that with you. Greg's probably updated you on MoDOT and what's going on there. It's great news that they shared some funds with you, you talk about that a little bit later on your agenda. Electric service, they are starting to mobilize, they're gonna mobilize more next week, start running the electric service to the building, that's good news. And gas, they're completing a lot of their easements that they need to get gas to your property, and that's gonna start getting coordinated and start coming on the site. So three of the main ones, two are down, we're waiting on MoDOT, and keep our fingers crossed, so. Any clarifications or questions on anything that you've seen or heard, I can back up to any slides if you have any questions, but we're real pleased with the progress and the crew out there, Tyler and Ryan are doing a great job for GSNS.
Are you seeing any slowdowns on the times when it comes to the materials?
Knock on wood, they have been proactive and have been ahead of it. I ask the question pretty regularly to me. And right now, everything's been, gone through shop drawings, got approval, they're ordering the materials, so as of today, we have knock on wood, no issues with material.
Awesome.
Yeah. That's a good question, because today's world, you just don't know where something is sitting or somebody's yard or waiting for a part.
Can you go back to the one slide where you could see both of the wings, the classroom wings, just real quick?
Yes.
So the one that has the roof, a lot of the roof on it, at the upper end of that is where those six classrooms go that we've been talking about at, and just so you know. So that'll make them go almost out to where the road will go around the building. I just thought.
No, that's good.
So, 'cause to me, visual helps a lot.
Good orientation. No, that's a good point.
Yeah, so that's where that, those extra six classrooms would be.
Will we have a playground finished on school?
Depending on the money.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's to be determined.
Okay.
There'll be grass, hopefully.
Yeah, definitely. That's correct. Grass. Yeah, so that whole section up there, Stephanie will have fields, and then to the right, lower right of that will be where the playground's at.
Any other questions for Matt?
Looks great, Matt.
Yeah.
Thanks Matt for bringing this up.
You're very welcome. Great to hear you're ahead of schedule. I guess that's one good thing of the drive out there, eh? Keep it going. I think MoDOT might like that, I wonder, might we too? Leave this here.
Awesome.
Don't do it. Alright, thank you Matt. You're very welcome. Have a good night, thank you.
You too as well.
Right, next on the list is our guidance program evaluation.
Yep, we have our counselors here. Counselors, Ms. McDaniel, looks like she's gonna give an hour presentation.
Ready for you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Tanya McDaniel. First of all, happy homecoming week. Counselors showed up in our gear today. We had a night at home, and so we're sorry about that, but we are soccer moms if you're wondering. I am here on behalf of the counselors to talk about the work we do and how it relates to our, a couple of our CSIP goals. I know you guys should have gotten our update. Dr. Ross really wanted me to read all eight pages, and I'm sorry, and I'm not going to. But I am just gonna give you an overview, really quick. So the first goal that we kind of focus on, the focus area is student achievement, and the goal is the Warren County Art Free School District will increase and maintain twenty percent of the graduating class eligible for the A-plus program during the CSIP cycle. So believe it or not, our elementary counselors and our middle school counselors, the work they do, it's ultimately gonna help us when we talk about attendance especially, so I'm just gonna kind of talk about what they gave me. The elementary and middle school counselors track weekly attendance, they make phone calls home to help overcome student attendance barriers and conduct home visits as needed. They try to connect with students and families in hopes to identify any obstacles, so they can provide the appropriate support to address attendance concerns, which directly impact academic achievement. If they can get students to develop a strong foundation with attendance, this will help them meet the requirements to eventually earn A-plus status. So by the time they get to the high school, we are making sure that these kids starting eighth grade hear it from us five times, and here's how we do it. Mostly Miss Thomas, but a counselor will go over to meet with the eighth grade and do a presentation about the A-plus program, so that's the first time. They tell them all the benefits of it and how they can get enrolled. Once they're in ninth grade, the A-plus coordinator will push into the class, the science classes, and she will meet with each class to make sure we get all the kids, she will remind them and encourage them to participate in the program. During a student's tenth grade, eleventh grade, and twelfth grade, each individual counselor has one-on-one meetings with students, and as part of our planning with them, we discuss their A-plus status. So I have already finished mine, so all two hundred kids that came through, if they weren't eligible, or hang on, if they weren't enrolled, but yet they were eligible, I gave them that form, I explained to them, you know, all the benefits of the program, so we're trying to attack it as much as we can. I think our biggest, probably by the time they're in twelfth grade, when they're really, when they really understand the importance of it, then it's kind of, not too late, but kind of too late, because they're involved in fifteen different things, and then they have to get their tutoring done, and so that's kind of a barrier, we're trying to, we're trying to get it done a little bit sooner. The focus area of behavior and safety of students is where we look at the next goal, and that goal is the Warren County Art Free School District will decrease the number of students who exceed tier one, which is zero to two referrals in quarter one, and then receive three or more referrals in quarter two by at least one percent annually. So all counselors district-wide, we work closely with our building administrators when behaviors and safety concerns arise. We are very lucky to have access to the district education support counselors or the ESCs. Our ESCs are licensed mental health professionals who are qualified to provide therapy services, crisis support, and risk assessments. We also work with Compass to provide counseling and therapeutic support inside and outside of the school. Our counselors often serve as mediators for peer-to-peer conflicts and/or student-to-staff conflicts. By supporting students' mental health and behavioral needs, we can often diffuse situations before they come referrals. So that's how we attack those two goals specifically. In the report, you're gonna see all the little stuff that we do that's a little more specific to each building, but do you guys have any questions for me?
No.
Alright.
I don't think so.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
For what it's worth, my sophomore daughter dressed very much like you guys.
Oh, good.
Alright, next on the list is our career tech education evaluation.
Yep, so that's just, I've got some numbers here for you, kind of see how we're doing, where those programs are. There goes. And this is in the report as well. So this is Four Rivers, so Four Rivers is where our students go off campus in Washington for their, our career tech education at their facilities. So on the left column there, that is this year, you can kind of compare it to the years past, and we're seeing an increase in construction trades, a little bit there, which is, I think, good. Bad to see education at zero, so hopefully we can change that trend a little bit, but that's kind of where those numbers are. Everything else is pretty, pretty similar.
Probably the fault of our apprenticeship program.
Yeah, we're picking them up. Yeah, we're sort of picking up apprenticeships, education apprenticeships here instead of going down there, so that's good.
So maybe it's not a bad thing, it's just a shift in how it's being done.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good, Brad. Think about that. Thank you. So here we are on our, what's going on at the high school by department. We can see Ag still staying strong, business marketing's strong as well. Facts are seeing a little bit of a decrease, but not a tremendous one, and journalism's staying a little bit, but everything else is pretty much about the same, practically the ways down a little bit, but up from a couple of years ago. So that's kind of where things are at the high school. Middle school would change the way courses are offered, so it's a little bit hard to compare exactly from year to year. You know, we combined Ag and IT, so that kind of skews those numbers a little bit. We could've got Ag and IT, but see it drop. I think it's just the way the courses were structured this year, so that's something we're definitely gonna monitor and see where we're actually seeing a drop in kids in those courses. The same thing with facts, kind of same, the same thing happening there. So just something to kind of keep an eye on, and are we really seeing it drop, or is it just the way that things are just scheduled differently? So I don't have great answers for that, or what's going on, just, you know, something that's on our radar.
Can you explain to me why we have Ag, IT, and IT?
Sure, so the Ag, IT was just, we combined Ag and IT to one class this year, and we also still have IT courses outside of that.
Okay.
I think. Nope, that's not right. I think I said it wrong. You know, maybe because when I just ran the numbers, I got both of them, because they're very similar, one seventy-one, seventy-two, I think I just ran the numbers wrong. Now that I said that.
So the one that's just IT really shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be there, right. It should be for this year, because we changed that. So I don't have a great handle on the middle school, as you can tell.
Okay.
Right. So there's just some things there I don't, I don't know real well on that. When I ran the numbers, I just had IT, I just, I think I just ran the numbers.
Is it?
And didn't register that those were the same. So we'll correct that, I'll fix that.
Okay.
But again, our goals are to continue to work local agencies to expand career technical opportunities. I did have the opportunity to tour the St. Charles Community College facility, and it is fantastic. So I know our counselors have two, so hopefully we can start engaging with them with more activities, because it's just in Forst, or just technically Wentzville, I think, but it's really, really close to us, and it is really a neat facility. So with that being fairly close to us, hopefully we can have some opportunities in the future to partner with them, so it really is cool. So that's the story there.
So with that, with the Wentzville, excuse me, St. Charles Community College, would that affect the Four Rivers, things that we do today?
Yep. Right now, our agreement's with Four Rivers to do things, but it could be, and they're just a community college, so we'd be dual credit, so it'd be a little bit different, but they could offer dual credit for career technical opportunities over there. We don't have anything lined up yet exactly on that, but there are, in my mind, where I, when I'm walking through this facility, I'm like, wow, this is great, how can our kids do HVAC and do all these things that they're doing?
Yeah.
And how do we partner with them? And so I know all the other school districts I was with are all thinking the same thing, so right now it is a community college, so it'd have, and they're, they're pretty full, they said they've got more kids than they can take. So it's about a space issue for them, and just how do our kids get there? There's some things to work out there, for sure, but I do, I do see a path forward with a partnership with them, we just don't have it lined out yet.
Or at least an opportunity for after our kids graduate, right?
Absolutely, after they graduate, they can go there.
Something that wasn't there before.
For sure, for sure. So there's some, some really wonderful opportunities for our kids in career tech that are fairly local, you know, just, just on the Wentzville side. I think it took me fifteen minutes to get here, get there from here, it was really close.
Alright, that's the story with that. Any other questions or comments about that? Alright, how about we move on to the CSIP quarterly update?
Yep, so these are just our quarterly updates, so we're kind of a little different format here, so I've got it in just kind of a spreadsheet. I just kind of bolded it so we can look at it quickly. We'll do our full evaluation in January like we normally do, but this will give us just, oop, a little too much.
A little too much.
Okay. Scroll. Just a little bit. Alright, great. Okay, so just to kind of hit these real fast, so where we are, our student achievement goals, so the twenty percent of our graduating class, we did not meet that last year, so that's gonna be not met until all year. And seventy-five percent of our students on reading level, right now, our first round of assessments were at seventy percent, so we're not met right there to start the year. Hopefully we'll see that increase, though, that's a lot closer than we were last year, so I'm hoping that for, we'll, we'll have, maybe our winter time, we'll be able to hit that, but we'll continue to monitor that very closely. Five out of eight math courses exceed the state, that did not happen this last year, and so that's still not met on that. So behavior, we're not able to determine this because it's, the way the goal writes is, you know, quarter one compared to the quarter in the next quarter, so we're not able to measure that one right now. Safety trainings, we've met, increased student mental health support, we've met, we've added some additional things through our insurance company that are now available to students, which is great. Retaining staff, even though we had one of a great years last year, we didn't hit that ninety percent mark. Classified pay, this one's a little bit tricky, because some of them are paying the same as us, some of them are not, since we didn't meet all of them, I just put not met. So some of them are paying a fifteen dollar, I'm looking at entry-level positions at fifteen dollars an hour, some are paying that minimum wage, or soon-to-be minimum wage, and some are not, so we're, until we meet them all, I'm gonna say no. Sad, a good way to look at it, I guess. So participation rate in the culture, we've not given that survey yet, so we don't have that information, and the same with the next question. The parent engagement, academic platform for parents, we are in progress with that, we have launched it for staff, and it is working, so maybe by Christmas time, we can have it for parents, but we'll, we'll see how that turns out, if that by New Year's or even maybe after Thanksgiving, we'll see. Right now, it's looking very promising that we can go forward with that, so that's kind of exciting news for me. But anyway, so then communication on the survey, again, the survey hasn't gone out. Increased partnership with businesses, we're in progress with that, went through our apprenticeship programs and other things, so that might be in progress most of the time, but I'm not sure what the end goal will be on that, but we will continue to do that. Other things that are in progress, open new elementary campus, which you met, Matt did a great job explaining where with that. Fund balances are met at above twenty-five percent, and then we are monitoring enrollment at middle school and high school, and then we're in progress to expand our early childhood programs, so that, that's all kind of coming together. So that's kind of where we are right now with that. I'll take any questions.
So I have a question.
Yes.
On reading and math.
Yes.
So where do you think our biggest barriers are, what do you think our biggest barriers are from getting the kids to those goals?
Sure, so I think in math, in math particularly, when we look at our test scores at the state, we do pretty well third through fourth, fifth grade, and then we, then we kind of start dropping in fifth down through middle school. So I'm not sure if we've got enough interventions in place there for kids, I'm not sure if we're motivating the middle school kids there, retention for staff is big too, so that's, those are the sort of things we're kind of eyeing. I wish I had a magic say, if this is the problem, I'll automatically, if we would just do this, and the scores would be higher, but that's not, it's fairly complicated. Reading, you know, we have, we're moving our reading programs to the University of Florida plant that UFLI, and I think that's, we're, we're hearing good, very good things from our teachers that are participating in that, and I think that's gonna have good, good impacts, and so we're starting to see that trend now. So we started some last year with that, and we're seeing higher scores this year in our reading level scores than we had last year, so I'm hopeful that that's, that the UFLI program is gonna help us out with that, and there seems to be pretty good buy-in with our staff, and it seems very positive. So when we look at reading and math, those are the sort of things we're looking at. For math, you know, again, it's, you know, when we, we know that our Singapore math program, the elementary levels, is a very strong program, and, but finding the time to do all the components every day, it's tricky, you know, training on that. And there seems to be pretty good buy-in with our staff, and it seems very positive. So, when we look at reading and math, those are the sort of things we're looking at. For, for math, you know, again, it's, you know, when we, we know that our Singapore math program, the elementary levels, is a very strong program. And, but finding the time to do all the components every day, that's tricky. You know, training on that style of teaching math is also challenging. We, we do some trainings on that throughout, throughout the year, anytime new somebody comes in. Particularly the model drawing area. I could talk a lot about the math side. So I, but the model drawing is really a critical piece to student achievement. You know, and the more we can do with that, better. So what we always try to do is we've identified a trainer who has the highest scores in, in the Wentzville School District, and, and I'm like, how'd you get such good scores? And it's not just because of the kids, it's because of the focus on number sense and model drawing, and doing that every day, all the time. And just, and getting the buy-in for people to do that, and feeling comfortable themselves to do that, you know, so that's not, not an easy thing to do. This person's obviously very talented, and so we try to emulate what they're doing over there, to get those scores here. So that's what we're working on, is, is focusing on, on those, those skill sets and approaches to teaching math and reading.
So is that program, are we seeing more success with students when they're using that program?
Yeah, so whenever they implement the strategies, so that's, that's the key, is implementing the strategies. And, and the, and the teaching methods that are behind that. So particularly in model drawing, it, it's a very time-consuming process. And so you can't really get to it every day, especially when you're already behind on, on, on some other issues, or you're not comfortable yourself with it. Really, that's a lot of it. So, you know, that's my general belief of how to improve math, is teaching number sense, you know, make sure kids understand base, base ten, how to make ten, mentally math, just kind of thinks traditional math thinking. But then applying it to a pictorial approach whenever you get to word problems. So, so you'd see, any new math concept that we really want people to do is start with a concrete, you know, I've got five batteries here, one, two, three, four, five, I can count them. Then I've got, and I'm going to draw a picture, I'm going to do a pictorial, I've got a picture of five. And then to the abstract that we just know that, you know, that's, that number's five and, and all of that. So, so that, that's pretty basic elementary, but you can apply that all the way through algebra. And, and that's really kind of the approach that we, we want our math instruction to look like. This is through that model, really concrete pictorial abstract to every new concept that we have.
So is it that we need more development for the educators on teaching that program?
Yes, yeah. That, that'd be my area of focus. We've, we've got good teachers that do a great, do a great job, it's just I don't know that they're comfortable, they didn't learn it this way. You know, it's not how the colleges are necessarily teaching it. But when you look at all the studies, you know, who's doing the best in the world, the PISA, the TMS, all those studies, it's clearly this is the best program. And that is one of the strongest. And it's not necessarily the program, it's the methods that are used. You can, you can teach this, this method in any, any program that you want it. But, but you really have to start with a concrete approach into math, pictorial, and then to the abstract, understanding how equations work. And, and so that, that all builds on itself. And, so at the middle school, I'm not sure exactly what's happening and why we're, we're seeing a decline. I think a lot of it is intervention at the elementary. We have a ton of interventionists. This year, we didn't really have, we, we had interventionists, but we didn't really get the results that we're hoping for. So I'm hoping that's just an implementation dip, because a lot of times, something new, you'll see kind of a drop as people are trying to learn the process. And hopefully, we have better this time, this year. So that's, we talked a lot there, I don't know.
That's okay. I had a lot of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, but thank you.
Sure. Sure, we'll get more in-depth with curriculum, we have APR, which we release in November.
Are the standards? It seems like we're dropping from the initial, so are the standards are being set up until then, and then, and then, to moving the line? Are they talking to each other, just to ensure that we?
Yeah, so the standards themselves, we follow them, as their learning standards, and so that continuum of standards that they have. And so as, as kids go through, they're just going through those, those standards. And so we're just, for whatever reason, just not doing, we, we see a drop as a cohort of kids, when they get to that middle school level, just not score as well as they did at the elementary level. So we're analyzing those standards, and that's part of kind of why we have everybody taking assessments in Canvas and having that, our academic dashboard. One of the levels we want to get to is where, where are our standards throughout the district in all content area, in, in math and reading particularly? And so our curriculum teams come together quarterly to review that data, to review information that they have at, at their, right now. And a lot of that's in Canvas, and so they're, they're looking at test questions, are the test questions good, are we missing it? And so, but, but I really think the heart of it is going to come back to instruction. And, and what I, what I really believe strongly is that, you know, model drawing is, is the key in middle school mathematics instruction. And the more we can do that, we've met with math teachers, and they're doing things, and they're seeing kids move some. You know, but I just don't know how comfortable our, our staff is, but I don't want to say anything, I'm not trying to say anything negative about our staff, they're really working hard, doing good things. We're just trying to figure out where, where, where can we do better?
We're just trying to ensure that we are setting up a standard from like eighth through fifth.
Right.
If that's the standard, that, like, if we want to do more model.
Model drawing, model drawing, yep.
So that, you need to start that early on, so that, because it sounds like, you know, just visualizing something.
Right. Right, and that's, so that, but even when you're doing algebra tiles and that sort of thing at, at algebra level, so it really translates well through algebra. On the math side, you know, we're just, you know, we've had a lot of turnover, and we're trying to get people trained. And so, our, the number one thing, and really, the number one thing that makes the most impact in student achievement is, is, is students coming to school on a regular basis when they're supposed to be here. And then, all the teacher stuff, you know, teacher retention, you know, teacher education. So the longer we can have teachers with us, the more likely, the long game is that we'll have higher scores in the future. But when, when we looked at math, though, to me, it really is about, you know, having middle math, strong middle math, good, strong base ten math, understanding base ten, in and out, I mean, just fluently. And then being able to attack any word problem through the model drawing process.
Could we add, I like this model as we.
Yeah, sure.
And then we can see like where we have.
Yeah, just as we're progressing.
Yes, but could we add to it, like, the percentage that we're having each word, so we can see, so like, first, for certain ones, like students on reading level, we can add that.
Yep.
Could we have a baseline of what our partnerships with businesses were initially, so we could see if that increases? So like, if we have five partnerships, now we have seven, you know?
Yeah, we can, we can put that on there. You know, some of them, we're not going to be able to, like.
Right, right.
Right. Right, but yeah, the ones we put, I thought about that myself, and I'm like, does it get too busy, or like, but yeah, I could, I can add that on there.
I think I'll make it be a quick look.
Sure.
Then we won't have to come to you and be like, what is that percentage?
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I got you. Happy to do that.
I think from my perspective, I mean, that was a, a good conversation to help me understand, especially around student achievement, I think we have the right goals.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
Things we want to improve, and we have the right goal to try to do that. Any other questions on CSET?
Is there anything with science that I don't?
I just wanted a goal from the committee, you know, but it's something we work on.
Yeah, and it's tested and everything, but it's just not, these, this is like sticking to the real basic stuff, you know?
I just realized it wasn't there.
Well, math and reading both play into science.
Yeah.
Achievement, so, yeah.
Other questions? Oh, I'll stick with the math, then you can go to the finance update.
All right, sounds good. Let's see, where are we at here? Okay, so. All right, so here we are in revenues and expenditures, so we are a little bit behind from last year. Of course, we get double payment, ACSC, I'm going to say that every month, probably. Expenses, we're actually doing a little less than we did last year, too. Fund balances are, are down compared to last year, mainly just because expenses are up. We actually have a little bit more money in the bank than we did last year, but because of the expenses, it's just basically how much is in our account divided by the expenses is your fund balance. And so if your expenses go up, you have to have more money to have higher fund balances, so. But we're still healthy, everything's very healthy, no concerns. So we're just trending a little bit below, we're, we're same kind of slope on the line. So we're looking, looking fine there. And then we've got our, our revenues compared to last year. Local is up slightly, and that is because of delinquent taxes. That one has shocked me. I'm like, why, that's, just people paying their taxes really late, landing in this fiscal year. So we appreciate them paying their taxes, though. State's down because we didn't get the double payment, we got about a million, million dollars last year, so we're trending similar, not minus that payment. Federal is, is up slightly, slightly, and that's just timing of payments. And so here we are, we're about a, you know, a little bit less than what we received last year through this year, but that was to be expected. So our expenses, salaries and benefits are up slightly, so we did give raises, and purchase services are trending similar. Supplies are very similar, but we are up a little bit compared to last year. Fund balance, what do we have in the account for capital projects? We've got one point nine million in there for projects. Bond issue, where we add on our cash flow. So the ending balance right now, we have about nineteen million, a little less than twenty million in that account. And, and we still have about four hundred thousand in our contingency fund for building. And that's the report.
All right, any questions on financial board or clarifications? Standard. All right, we can move on to the consent agenda. There are a few contracts on the consent agenda that, let's hear it. Basically renewals, but if there's any questions or comments on any of those.
I just have a question on the athletic trainer services, is that for coaches?
No, this is for our athletic trainers, so if a player gets injured at a game.
Yeah, like medic for the game guy.
It is our same person that we have.
Any other questions or entertain a motion?
I move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Keith. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Consent agenda is approved. We have no old business today, so we'll move on to new business. And always interesting that we talk about the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar.
In October.
We have the twenty-sixth and the, yeah, school calendar to, to discuss.
Right, and so some people think we're doing this late, would like to have this a little sooner than now, so. Right, so this is the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar that we would have, a very similar calendar to what we've had in years past. And we are determined when the start date is. By state law, we can only start two weeks before Labor Day. So that means there's only one week this year in August, which pushes our end date very late to June third. A little bit different this year. Normally, we would end on a Friday, but because it is so late, we would decide not to have the built-in snow day, and just end on that Thursday and hope for good weather. So we, that, what that does mean, though, is we might end up with more Monday attendance days we have to go during the year. But if it doesn't snow, then we're good, so it's kind of a game one way or the other.
The first day is August twenty-fifth?
Yes. Good pull-up here, I think that's correct, yes.
That's definitely.
Yeah, Labor Day is the seventh, so it's the latest as it can be.
Any questions or discussion on the calendar?
I make a motion to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar as presented.
All second.
All right, we'll go with the N O now, on the second. We have a motion and a second to approve the calendar, the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Calendar is approved. I just closed out of my agenda, so.
It's on the screen, it can be used too.
Seven point two, item of business, alternate number one change order, so that's the, the big one.
Yeah, so this would be at the six classrooms, like we talked about in the work session, this would be the official document for that. So we'd estimate it at one point two million, and it's a little less than that, of one million, one hundred sixty-seven, five hundred thousand, thirty-six cents. So, I've got to get some cents in there. Okay.
Probably not exactly how it would come out anyway, but. I should ask Matt this, I guess, while he was here, but will they start right away if we approve tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what they'll do, so they just got guys coming off, one part of the job, let's come back to that.
Yeah. Yeah, because they plan on catching up with that, I mean, yeah.
And then this comes later, but because we have the no doubt cost share agreement, we're sitting here.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the modot definitely helps us, getting the one point four million dollars from them is really what freed up funds to allow this to be possible.
I make a motion to approve alternate one addition as presented.
Sorry, everyone? Thank you, Keith. We have a motion and a second to approve alternate number one change order as presented. Any further discussion or questions before we vote? All right, all those in favor of approving the alternate as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item of new business is our communication plan, so we have to approve.
Yeah, so we have a new policy that we approved a couple of months ago, policy KB, that outlined some specific requirements in a communication plan. Most of those requirements are already outlined in other policies, so we essentially took language from the policies, put it in a plan that's, just all put in one spot. This will end up on our website. Happy to take any questions on it.
What defines a timely manner?
Uh, let's see.
If you are, like, I want to say it's under public information, I think it's last page. Last page.
Okay.
Term to last paragraph, so all districts have responded, I have the mayor's all requests.
Right, so when I put that on there, that is, that is a section that it was not necessarily directly from policy, because there's a couple of different requirements, and I was just trying to be all inclusive, because like a sunshine request, we have three days. But really, the expectation is a twenty-four hour response if someone would call, so there's some variance there, and I didn't want to kind of pigeonholes to. And there's no, no law that says we have to respond in twenty-four hours, but that is kind of the standard that we want people to respond, back back. So we can, we can phrase it however you like.
But you're saying there's already currently a law that says three days?
Three days for sunshine, and we try to turn it faster than that, but, you know, there are some limitations on, on things that could happen, that might take longer.
Right.
But I'm open to whatever you'd like to put there.
Is there any suggestions to change it, or is it good with the way it is?
I think I'm okay with it, just simply because there is something that currently outlines what that definition is.
For some.
For those specific requests.
For some requests, right.
There's some requests, there are some requests, like, under that, it could be apparent emails.
Right.
When they got a response, it's also covered in that.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, and what we tell people, the expectation is twenty-four hours, but sometimes people are sick, and they, you know, so like, can't get to it. You know, so there's some continuing circumstances that, when you put a hard number on it, it's hard to, like, enforce sometimes, because things get in the way.
The other one, page four, number four, very bottom of page four. Communicate with students electronically.
Yes.
And so it says the district discourages, can we put stronger wording there?
I believe that was straight from the policy, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's copying and pasting.
Yeah, it was copying and pasting from the policy on that, so we could adjust the policy, or we can change this too, if you'd like.
What are people's feelings? I reviewed our policy because I came through G E H.
Is that right, Brian said one. We worked on this collaboratively, so, does that sound right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I reviewed that and. I reviewed that, and one thing that we don't have really defined is like speaking with students on social media, you know, we don't want them to text them either, but just. Obviously, if it's not your family member.
Right, so.
Are you suggesting that we change it to prohibits?
I like prohibits discourages, but I think that we also maybe need to review GPH at some point to make it align.
Yeah, I mean, I personally like the way this aligns with our policies, so I'd be grateful to change it, probably a little bit, policies.
Okay, well I can put together a draft, so just general, what would you like for it to say?
Great question, I don't know.
Okay, maybe Karen, I'll get with you after this, and we can, or not tonight, but.
Yeah, yeah.
In the near future, to just kind of brainstorm an idea, bring forward something.
Is there any other questions or thoughts on a communication plan?
So if we approve it tonight as is, and then we have an amendment to it later.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
We can still do, we can change it at any time, right?
Correct, correct.
We could amend it if you feel like there's a better way to state it, and once we've compared the other policies that pertain to this, make sure it all aligns.
Hope that works. No other questions, I would entertain a motion, I guess.
I move the approval of the communication plan.
Thank you, Frankie.
I'll second.
Okay, you two, we're all saying.
Stephanie gets this one, then.
Stephanie's heard.
Stephanie got it, yes.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the communication plan as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Last item of new business is the MoDOT cost share.
I was hoping to have the official agreement today, and I don't. So there are apparently two more layers that it has to go through at MoDOT to get to us, but this is what they have right now, as of today. But to not slow the pro, slow it down, what I would like, and what I'm asking is, is if we could give me the authority to sign it, to get it back to them as quickly as possible, so we can not have to get behind another month. They don't anticipate very many changes to what we have here, it just has to go through their next levels.
I make a motion to have the superintendent decide the final MoDOT cost share agreement.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve our superintendent to sign the final MoDOT cost share agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Well, thanks.
We'll, we'll put it through real quick, please.
You have, all right. We don't have any policy first reads for this month, so we will skip down to miscellaneous and start with celebrations.
And Mr. Barton's not here, so I'm going first. Watch, watch me. I'm going first to say what he was going to say.
Doesn't count if you're just saying what he's going to say.
But if he hadn't said it, I was going to, because I'm a former band mom, so I can say this too. We need to definitely celebrate our marching warriors, our color guard, and our drum line for their win at the making competition. That's very exciting. And I, I, as a, as a former band mom, it's really exciting to me, because that's a big deal, that was our first competition of the year, right?
Yes.
That's a big deal, so, big celebration for that. I would also like to celebrate Warrior Ridge, because we took a van over from Agape Food Pantry this morning, and picked up a whole bunch of food that they donated, that they collected for us. We kind of did a little ceremony at the football game the other night, but it was great to get that whole van load of food. And I know that the FFA and FBLA, I think, are collecting food for Agape again at the football game tomorrow night, and then the one in two weeks. Usually the FFA trick or treats for food for Agape, but they're going to be coming back from their national convention in Indianapolis that day, so it's not going to work for them. So they're, they, they figured out something else, but I'm always proud of kids supporting things in the community like that.
Yeah.
I'd like to celebrate our homecoming parade, we had a good turnout, it's awesome, it's fun.
Yeah, it's homecoming week, beautiful weather, football game should be. Nice weather tomorrow, so, looking forward to it. Any other celebrations? Anybody else have anything?
Not a celebration, but we have our very first movies in the park, it's at Dyer Park. We're going to be showing Hocus Pocus, and that is tomorrow night, Stephanie.
Great weather for that, too?
Yeah.
Awesome. So for workshop topics, we don't actually have a workshop this, this month, because some of us are heading to the MSBA conference later in October, so that kind of counts as our workshops, as, as we probably talked about, quite a few different topics that we can work through there in the 10 different sessions, and usually a good opportunity to hear what other school boards are up to as well, so. Looking forward to that, and, was that two weeks away, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we need to set our next regular meeting for November.
I make a motion to set the next regular Board of Education meeting for November 13th, 2025.
I'll second.
Thank you, Stephanie. We have a motion and a second to set the next regular meeting for November 13th, 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion passes. Now we can set the next closed session.
I'll make a motion to set the next closed Board of Education meeting to immediately proceed the regular meeting on November 13th, 2025.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deanna. We have a motion and a second to set the next closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting on November 13th, 2025. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, our next closed session is set, and we have one final item of business.
How are we going to do it? Mr. Barton is not here. Oh, here we go.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
There we go.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to adjourn.
No more time I can do.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?